Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting complies with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting and as provided on this bulletin board and the appropriate newspapers.
Thank you. Roll call please, Kathleen.
Mr. Brezzi.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Hudek.
Mr. Martins.
Here.
Mr. Sutch.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here. I believe we have resolutions this evening?
Yes, we have four resolutions. The first is resolution 2025-14. This is a resolution authorizing variance for property located at 1371 West Veterans Highway. This is the Love to Owl Animal Rescue, which we named for a call that we heard several meetings ago. The resolution was sent to the board and the professionals for review. No comments were received.
Okay. We made a motion in a second to approve the resolution, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
The next two resolutions are both for fences. As you may recall, two meetings ago, we heard three fence applications. Two were granted and one denied. The denial is not on, but the two approvals are, the first one, 2025-15, for installation of a six-foot solid fence and playground equipment in the front yard of property located at 20 Sunny Woods Lane, block 5802, lot 10. As you recall, the two that were approved were corner lots.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi. Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-16, that's for granting variance for installation of a six-foot solid fence in the front yard of property located at 2 Calvary Court, block 3902, lot 97. This was also a corner lot and this was the one with the 20-foot easement on the side and that condition is part of the resolution.
Motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi. Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Last resolution is JCP and L. It's resolution 2025-17, granting preliminary and final major site plan approval and variance approval. As you, I'm sure, recall, this was for various lots across various zones. All of the conditions were accepted in or incorporated into the resolutions and also the chart of variances that was prepared and put into evidence is also an exhibit to the resolution.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi. Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
That is all the resolutions for this evening.
Okay, we do have minutes this evening from the May 21st, 2025 meeting. I need a motion in a second to approve the minutes, please?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes. I also have a voucher this evening from the township of Jackson for $175 for our recording secretary for this evening. I need a motion in a second to approve payment of the voucher.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Brezzi.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Hudek. Mr. Martins.
100% yes.
Mr. Sutch.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes. Do we have any announcements this evening, Mrs. Brani?
Yes, number four on the agenda, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong copy, no wonder, I was confused. I'm sorry, it's not, number four on the agenda, Ursino Guavera, the Lobos, use variance 3519, has been carried to August 6, 2025. No additional notice is being required at this time.
All right. No executive session this evening. Any matters for discussion? No matters for discussion, correct?
No, no matters for discussion. Actually, I'll hesitate and simply say on that. I had sent around the suggestions reverting procedural changes and ordinances. I'd received some comments back. I will be incorporating those into draft ordinances. I will then circulate those ordinances and ask if there are any comments. If there are not, well, in the next meeting, I get approval from the board, we will send them to the township council for consideration.
Thank you. Any administrative approvals this evening? I don't believe so, correct?
Correct.
All right. So then we are going to move to what reads, oh no, I'm sorry, we have to swear in the professionals.
Oh, yes. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and position for the record.
Mark Romeyer, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Thank you.
Before we move to application number two, I see a number of people in the audience and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the application for 747 Tom's River Road, Ursino Guavera Villa Lobos, and I apologize if I butchered their name, that has been carried to the August 6 meeting, so there will be no testimony on that this evening. Okay? So we are now going to move to what is on the agenda is applicant number two, Benjamin Tac, variance 3537, block 403, lot 8. Mr. Tac?
Yes.
Mr. Tac, I'm going to swear you in because I, it appears you're here representing yourself, so your
That is correct.
presentation will also be in the nature of testimony. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name again for the record.
My name is Benjamin Tac. I am the homeowner of 16 Forenzy, right here in Jackson Township in New Jersey. As far as my opening statement, I moved here back in October of last year in pursuit of more of a scenic life to give my children and my wonderful wife more of a chance at an American dream away from the New York City lifestyle, which is very robust and very quick, in pursuit of more of a calm environment. Fortunately, we are in love with the property, in love with the neighbors, everything is great, but we realized shortly after that our property created certain challenges as our rear property is shared adjacent with two of our neighbors. Unlike most properties that are back-to-back with one individual property, ours is sort of aligned with two. So I would say about 75% of our property is covered, 25% seems to be exposed. We have a very unique layout of our property, which consists of not only a pool but a play area and some vegetation. The challenge that we have is that in that rear left corner, there seems to be an exposed area. I have children and my children seem to be afraid a lot of the dogs that some of the neighbors adjacent to me have. Although I love animals, I can't really control, you know, how they respond or they react to it. So I figured that placing a shed in that unique central location would really help me solve not only the privacy and security for my family, but also give us the functionality of the utility purpose of a shed, ranging from mow equipment to pool supplies, pool equipment. It's just a central location that can be found there. Some of the challenges we ran into when, you know, applying for the zoning is that we were told there are certain setbacks and I respect that, so I'm here today asking for a variance in pursuit of trying to help, you know, physically structure my property to help with the amenities that we are set out to look for. So here you'll see the, this is the survey that was used when I purchased the property. I do have a fence around my pool right now that is a pool fence that I think borders around four and a half feet. It covers the interior of the pool and then you'll see that in the back left-hand corner there, that area is exposed. I thought of putting things like shrubs, which I'm sure is just a generic rebuttal that most of you guys will have for me today. The challenge with shrubs is that it takes time for it to mature and it doesn't really offer the sense of privacy or security as different weather variations will sort of diminish on that and it'll cause additional harm to the pool. As, you know, as the shrubs need to be maintained, there are roots there that can also affect the pool and it can cause some challenges. There are additional exhibits that I included here today, which would give you guys more of a visual layout. You'll see here that brown fence is the
Excuse me, Mr. Tac.
Sorry.
Do you have copies of these additional exhibits to provide to the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you want me to hand them out, I can pass them around?
Yes, please.
Sure.
And I assume you want those admitted into evidence?
Two of them are already on here. There's maybe a third picture that wasn't added there, just I had a chance before I got here to sort of present it. So you'll see that in the back of this area, there is about a section there that's about 10 feet wide or maybe 13 feet wide. So visually, it doesn't look like a lot of space through the picture, but when you're actually there is a good amount of space. If you look at the next slide, the next picture, you'll see more of the reason for concern. Here you don't really get to see so much. But if you look there, so this is the 25% area that is sort of exposed to that wooded area and that's where the dogs will come in and, you know, when you have children running around by the pool, my kids are young, it's just very startling and frightening for them to, you know, want to react in such an environment. It's very unsafe and it's just really not, you know, not practical. My neighbors do have their own fences and for me to put up another fence on top of a fence, I think is beyond code. It's just, it's ridiculous. So what I'm really trying to accomplish here is just put something in the back, ideally. I will note that in another exhibit, I did a little research through the Oprah Act and I found that my neighbor adjacent to me on the left side was granted a similar variance in the exact same location. So I'm hoping that if previous leniencies were granted for a neighbor that maybe doesn't necessarily have a similar layout as me, as I have a pool and I don't think he does, but the placement really just makes the most sense for this specific location.
Mr. Tac, I just want to clarify something. So in this zone, there's a 15-foot setback required from the side of your property lines. What are the setbacks you're proposing?
So I would like to install a 10-by-20 shed. The width of that area that is open there is around like 19, 19.5. So I figured 20 will just get me a little over and it'll provide more of a sound barrier and a functionality of physical privacy that, you know, can pretty much allow my family to enjoy that scenic lifestyle that we promised them.
Thank you. The question is, how far from the rear and side property lines will the shed be?
It's a good question. So right now there is about a 13-foot distance from where that pool shed. There's like a little brown fence over there that hides the pool equipment, like the pump and, you know, all that stuff. So if you go from that wall to the actual black fence, there's 13 feet there. So I'm proposing to put something that is 10 feet wide, which will give me about three feet of distance, which maybe I can add something there on the sides or just leave a little bit of distance in case someone, there is an emergency and someone has to, you know, get through.
So that's how far? It would be three feet from the side and how far from the rear?
So that's basically what it's going to be, three feet from the rear.
And then how about from the side?
Which side are you referring to?
So from the rear, there's
Where the white fence is?
Right, there's exactly where your fence is.
Okay, so that Okay, got it. The white fence to that brown fence distance is right around 20 feet, so I was hoping to go right up alongside the fence.
So on the property line, no setback?
On the property line, yeah, no setback. The only setback would possibly be from the other side if there needs to be a distance. I'm okay with compromising. I just think that this is the best solution for this specific layout.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
So just to be clear, dogs weren't physically on the property. The back area is more of like a wooded area that is adjacent to the property behind me. The dogs are left out there free to pretty much roam around. They're big dogs. I would imagine that a four-foot fence is not really going to sustain or hold a dog of that size from jumping over. With me, it's like with my kids, all they need to do is see the dog out there and then in their imagination, it's gonna jump and it's quite frankly really possible. So to give them that level of, you know, security, I figured put the shed in that placement anyways and sort of knock two birds with one stone to really help solve the problem.
Have you called anyone with regards to dogs running loose?
I have a good relationship with all my neighbors. I had written testimony today that I can submit from the neighbor that actually shares the backyard. He understands the concern. I was told actually minutes before this hearing that he would actually have to be here present and that he would have to be sworn in and just unfortunately, logistically, it didn't work out to bring him here. But I do have written testimony stating that he understands the need and the concern and that he is not objecting to it in any way, shape or form. I have a written statement from him signed.
So you never called the town or animal control or anybody regarding these?
I think that people are entitled to have animals. I'm a big animal lover myself, so I don't think he's doing anything wrong. It's his property and he's allowed to have his dogs roam around his property. The challenge is, is that I have a unique layout that sort of shares our, you know, backyards and that area unfortunately is just really where this ordeal really came about.
And you stated that you would have a three-foot opening on the side of the shed?
So as long as you have the distance, which is why I was answering her, to go 20 feet, you'll pretty much cover that area. It'll come out a little bit. So even if there's marginally, you know, a foot, two feet on the sides, it's not really going to be as visual as there'll be something physically, you know, like as a barrier blocking them from actually seeing or hearing or even just thinking about the dog just jumping through. or even just thinking about the dog just jumping through. I mean, ideally, I would like to put it up against the wall completely. But if there are setbacks or challenges with the zoning board, and, you know, if that just simply doesn't work, then I'm open to a suggestion. You can just clearly see the layouts. I mean, there's really no room for me to put any additional fencing here. My neighbor on the left has a white fence. The one on the back has a brown fence, and I have a black fence. Any additional fences at this point is just going to, you know, be totally ridiculous.
And may I ask, how old are your children?
Yes, so I have, I have one child that is nine years old, another one that's eight, and another one that's five, and my wife is expecting.
And your wife is expecting, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Martins? Into the microphone, please.
Aw, man. I got a lot of equipment over here. What was the height of the shed that you're proposing?
So standard heights are right around ten feet high.
Ten feet, okay.
And that's more or less what we would be going with, standard height.
Yeah. So the other fences are from your neighbor, and I guess, well, the black fence, it's all yours.
Yeah, the black fence surrounds the pool, so that part is mine.
That's totally yours.
Correct. And then after the pool fence goes the brown fence, and that just basically provides the coverage from my other neighbor.
And then that opening to that other property, that's also your neighbor's. They just decided not to go, not to have-
Correct, yes. So he has a very interesting shape to his property. And he has a pool area, which that's why the dogs roam around there. He's not going to let the dogs roam around the pool. So, you know, he just lets them run around. He plays his games with them. And I'm a big dog lover, so I can understand why he's there. It's just an unfortunate situation, but, you know, I figured this might help really solve the problem.
Right, 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 okay. You mentioned about the written testimony from one of your neighbors?
Yes.
Is that part of the-
No.
Oh, I can't use it?
Correct, because there's not an opportunity to question the statement.
Okay, got it. Got it. So really, I shouldn't even listen. I didn't hear what he just said about the testimony, right? Because I can't question it, although I can because he's... Like what he meant, he didn't show me a piece of paper, but he just said it.
You could ask Mr. Tack a question, but we cannot accept the statement into evidence.
Okay, gotcha. So your other neighbor, the one that didn't give you the testimony, does he have an issue? Does he know you're doing this?
It's a good question. So he actually doesn't really care for the dogs because he's a dog lover himself. He has his own dogs. His dogs, I will notice, are a little bit smaller, so they're cuter in a way, in a sense. So my kids are not as startled. It's really the adjacent one that I share the back with that is more concerning. And there is privacy fence there, so, I mean, even if they run around, there's really no concern of them jumping over immediately to cause some problems.
Right, right. My question was more about, does he have a concern about you putting a shed? That's what, fourteen feet, I think you said?
Are you referring to the neighbor that granted the variance and got the same shed?
Is that the one with the white fence?
Yes.
Yes, that one.
Yeah, he has the same shed and the same area, so I would, I can't imagine that he would have a problem.
Right. So your testimony is that he's not meeting, or he got a variance or something. He's not meeting the setback requirement either?
Yeah, I actually uploaded through the Oprah Act. I was able to pull his variance, and I submitted it for the board to review today as well.
Right.
It should be here.
Yeah, would you say it's this shed here?
Yeah, it's a cape shed that's all the way in the back. I don't know if you can really see it there. It's on the top, but it's in the same-
Yeah, this one clearly shows it.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same concept, same idea, same location.
Right. Okay, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, really, my concern is, and I see the other shed. So a fence would be six feet, right?
Right.
Now, you want to kill two birds with one stone, but that stone is fourteen feet high. So, you know, it stands out, obviously. And that's my concern. That's why I asked those questions the way I asked them.
I'm sorry, I thought you said the dimensions of the shed were ten by twenty.
It is a ten-by-twenty shed, so I was just going to ask-
Oh, sorry.
It's not fourteen, it's ten by twenty.
How tall is it?
Ten feet.
Ten feet. Okay, that's a little better. It's still taller than six feet.
Yeah, no, I understand.
But you got a good point, that your neighbor has one too. You can see it from your yard, you can see the shed, but-
Excuse me, every situation is unique, and until the zoning officer can speak on that, just because the neighbor has one doesn't mean that this is the same situation or has the same hardship. So let's hold our judgment on that until we hear from the zoning officer.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to outline what my concern was, and maybe it can be addressed. Thank you.
Ms. Gina?
Mr. Tack, just two quick questions. Just to clarify, you have an issue with the back neighbor, but you want a possible three-foot setback from that rear property line? But you want zero setback to the side property line? Why not switch it? Why not put it up against that rear fence and then have a three-foot setback off the side? Just curious.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes, so you had testified that you want a three-foot setback from the rear property line? And that's the issue that you're having with the animals?
The issue is stemming from the right side, the open exposed area.
Right, but you want a zero setback, you want on the property line against the fence to the left side. Wouldn't you want it reversed? I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
Ideally, I would like no setbacks, meaning go straight against the property line. I offered it as a settlement to try to compromise in case there was a challenge here.
Something you're open to, understandable. My, just to follow up with that, it's just hard when you're right up on the property line, especially with that number of fences, for you to maintain any possible vegetation growth back there.
That's why I offered the three-feet distance.
Right. My other question is, are you requesting any utilities in the shed? Any electric or anything?
No need.
Just going to be a basic shed?
Just pool supplies, yeah. Pool supplies, Jewish, you know, items as well, seasonal items.
Just personal storage, that covers it all, not a problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Romeyer?
Yes, just typically, we would recommend at least a two- or three-foot setback from the property line for maintenance. I would agree with Gina.
And that would be on both the side and the rear, correct?
Correct.
So Mr. Tack, what the engineer is saying, what the zoning officer is saying, that on the rear, the rear property line and the side, at least two to three feet? Would that, is that something that you would be amenable to?
Again, I ideally like to run up directly against the area to cover it thoroughly without having to plant or put up any vegetation. I think the purpose of this is also to understand that there is no utilities that are actually going here, so the maintenance is very low. Putting vegetation or other stuff will require maintenance, and it'll practically be impossible to really go behind there to strategically try to maintain it with such limited space. So, I mean, I hear where you're coming from. I understand it. If there's a real concern, I'm open to it. But just practically speaking, there's no utilities there, so there's really nothing to handle there.
Maintenance meaning more so like the grass that's growing? How are you going to weed whack or anything, the grass that's growing back there? Or eventually fifteen, ten, fifteen years down the road when your paint's chipping on the shed, how are you going to get back there to paint it? That's more the maintenance that Mark and I were trying to discuss.
Part of compliance was to have it installed with the same functionality of the actual home, so the same vinyl siding, the same siding is very easy to replace.
Yeah, I was just using that as an example. Maintenance of the accessory structure itself, as well as whatever vegetation is already currently growing.
Right, the vegetation that's there will have to be replaced. You don't typically put a shed on top of vegetation. You want to put some sort of-
Frankly, put a slab.
Yeah, slab.
But even gravel, I mean, weeds grow in there. And that's just something that we see, especially from a code enforcement perspective. So I would just hate to see you request something, the board approve it, and then come down the line and become a problem because it's really, you really can't access that.
Right, I think concrete would probably be the best solution there because that guarantees there's no shrubs or anything growing out of there. I think that would really solve the problem.
Mr. Peters, do you have any input for us?
No matter what you have.
Thank you.
I did just remember one, well, not remember, but you brought up a question. So right now, the back of the black fence to your neighbor's property looks very nice, clean. If it happens to get overgrown and stuff comes, starts coming over to your fence, obviously, you can't do anything about that because you got the shed now, right? Back to, there's no space to go there and make any kind of maintenance. Do you see that as a potential issue in the future?
Not really, I mean, there's-
If you have no access to that.
It's a good question, but there's really nothing alongside the actual wall itself. There's no trees within a, you know, five-to-ten-foot radius. It just goes further into the property. So, I mean, I'm also really good friends with the neighbor. He's a member of the community, a member of the tribe. So if there's a problem, you know, I'm sure I'll work it out with him.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Just to remind the board, obviously, in this application, there needs to be a showing of hardship, whether there's a unique physical condition. There's been some testimony about the conditions of the property. I don't know in terms of uniqueness, and whether those conditions create practical difficulties or undue hardship in complying with the zoning ordinance, which is the fifteen-foot setback. You have to make sure that you've got a determination the hardship is not self-created. In this case, it appears to come from the lot, and whether the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or impairment of the zoning plan. So those are the factors that you need to consider.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm going to open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak about the testifying on this application for this evening? You can come forward. Mr. Tack, can you just step to the side, please? Thank you.
Hello, how is everyone today?
Fine, and if I could, before you go, could you please raise your right hand?
Yes, sure.
Do you swear that the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And could you please state your name for the record?
Michael Di Lorenzo. Okay? So I live right across the street, right in the community. I could appreciate where you're coming from as far as moving into the neighborhood and wanting to appreciate and enjoy the way our community feels and just the aspect of the community. My concern is with a unit that is ten by twenty by ten tall, that will this start to change the feel of the community? And when we're talking about putting a foundational slab in it, this is more for the zoning team, but I believe that would substitute or make this, this building a building. And I just don't understand, being a homeowner myself and having a lot of these similar things that I have to go through, how putting such a large shed up is going to get to the solution when that's a twenty-foot span that could be satisfied by three fence pieces, which costs a whole lot less than doing a shed? So my question would be, as far as the storage unit, you plan on storing things in it, correct?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, could you direct your testimony to the board, please?
As far as this being a storage unit, I would like to know that this is only going to be used for storage, never for dwelling, never for any type of gatherings, anything like that, and that it would be used just for those purposes. I would just like to feel confident in that. The other thing is, I know with my property, I have an easement running through. I've been in a situation like this where, you know, I tried to get different variances approved, and I was told I could not do certain things because that is what the township has enforced, okay? When I purchased my house, I was told about the variances and the things that I was able to do and not do, okay? Much like Benjamin, unfortunately, purchasing the house knowing what you're getting into, knowing what you're purchasing, you knew getting into this, what you were going to be able to get approved and not approved. And I think it is unfortunate, because I do feel for Benjamin with the dog situation. I just think that a shed is an extreme measure to try to cover up or block the concern of the animals. The cost of a shed, ten by twenty, I looked into many sheds and tried to figure out for myself what that would look like and what the zoning would be for me, how many feet off my neighbor's yard. And I know that I would need to move that shed in a certain point. And now what I'm being told or hearing is that I could practically build my shed right on my property line when I still need to maintain that, the maintenance of it, the appearance of it, and that could possibly be justified and allowed. And I'm just kind of torn. It's confusing to me, getting back to me purchasing my house and me being on an easement. Unfortunately, I have about ten feet of wasted space because that easement runs right through the line of my property. And I was told I could not build anything on it, and I had to set my fence back ten feet, okay? So I understand where he's coming from, and I could relate to him. But unfortunately, the rules and the laws are the laws, and they're there for us and to protect us. And I would just really appreciate if we would just abide by that. Like I was getting to the point as far as the size of the shed, for the price of a shed like that, you could buy full-grown shrubbery, bushes, trees, and you would be able to accomplish the same thing, okay? Also, the comment as far as the fence on top of the fence, there's many neighbors who will do that. And that small span of putting this fence up to where it will block out those animals, I still think would do the same thing as creating this huge building. So that's my perspective on it. I did take the time out to come here and speak. I just wanted my voice to be heard, and I just thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you for coming forward.
You have any questions for me?
I do not. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Hyman?
I would just, you know, comment that I very much understand your concern. And your property does, like you're saying, may have an easement. His may not have an easement, and each property is based on its own merits, the topography and things of the same. As far as the character of the neighborhood, you're saying that, you know, it's sort of setting such a precedent. We did get an exhibit for the resolution for his next-door neighbor, which has a very similar-sized shed. So I think that, you know, he's not setting any kind of precedent, and his neighbor next door to him has it, so I think it is actually appropriate.
So Mr. Hyman, with all due respect, I believe Mrs. Bradley mentioned that those are different cases. We're talking about this case here and now. I don't know what went into the decision that allowed that to happen, but we're talking about this situation here and now. So I think that's a different case that really should not be brought up at this time.
I agree. We don't know what hardship that property owner has.
Correct. The other thing is, do we have the exact dimensions of that shed? Now, we assume it's the same size based on the look of the picture, but do we have the exact dimensions of that shed and the reason or what that shed is being used for?
So as was stated, the issue is really with this property, obviously. The question of whether there's another shed could go to the character of the neighborhood. But as I think you are aware, the shed itself, just having the shed, is not the subject of the variance application. The variance application is only for the setback.
That is correct. I am aware of that. And there would be other places in the yard where I'm sure you could put a shed, but I understand Benjamin's concern. If I could put a shed here, I block out the neighbors and I also have a shed. So I understand that completely. Any other questions for me?
Okay. Thank you for coming forward.
Question for you. I heard some testimony about a pad going down. I heard some testimony about a pad going down, a concrete pad. Is that true?
So I was responding to one of the members here regarding to maintenancing any areas around the shed. And I suggested that if weeds are concerned, you can put up a concrete slab that would eliminate that form of, you know, maintenance. But, I mean, if you prefer a regular slab, that, you know, a regular fence, structure, I forget what they call it, we could do that too.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, you said a shed typically, if it is not built on a concrete pad, it's considered a temporary structure?
I think that more so relates to size.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
And a ten by twenty with on a slab or on the ground, what is?
So we've seen them be put on concrete slabs. We've also seen them just be anchored. Some sheds nowadays, they're like kits that come with like flooring kits, Mr. Hudak. So we've seen multiple variations. It's not necessarily a slab is required, depending on size, but that would be built in code-related, not zoning-related.
But what are the requirements of, you know, a shed of this size? This is larger than, this is going to require a inspection and a building permit and so forth, correct?
I believe if anything over 200 square feet requires a building permit, so I think this would be exempt, but I think the question that you're trying to ask would best be answered by the building inspector, so I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. And we're considering this an accessory structure and it needs to comply with the accessory structure setbacks, and whether it's permanent or temporary structure, that's, that's a building department question.
Based on the research that I did, anything under 200 square feet doesn't really require anything other than a zoning permit. The only issue we're, we're challenged with today is the setbacks, the location of where this is going.
Which as an FYI, I have a shed in my backyard. I had to adhere to a 15-foot setback as well. So I'm, I'm having difficulty accepting your hardship. I don't really hear a hardship.
If you pull up my zoning survey, this, the survey, I would like any suggestions that you would recommend on where a shed would go.
Well, you have over a half an acre. You have a pretty big backyard.
Right.
So it's not a matter of, you don't have the room to put that shed and, and abide by the zoning laws. I think what you're trying to do is kill three birds with one stone. One, close up that opening. Two, give yourself some storage. And three, give yourself as much yard as you can. So, you know, I, I don't, I'm having a tough time with this.
I can't really move any of the structures that are on the property. I have a playground, I have a pool, I have patio structure. These are things that are built into the ground. You can't really put a shed on top of them. It's just not practical. So I think for this specific case, although I hear my neighbor, Michael, and I understand his situation probably warranted different results, but this layout just really doesn't offer me any other, any other way to round it.
I'm looking at this and I'm seeing wide-open spaces all, all over your yard.
So I'm struggling with this one because, well, part of the issue is, you have a beautiful home, let me say that. Part of the issue for us is we like to go out and see it and you can't without going in your yard, which we would not do. So I did drive by, but you cannot get a visual of your backyard from the street. So based on this, it's very difficult as compared to looking at the pictures to see what the issue is. So my struggle here is it's a 15-foot setback and you don't want to have any. I'm trying to put, I am a homeowner in Jackson like you, and I'm struggling here because the simplest solution to me seems to be to get fenced just to cover that area. But I understand you want storage, but on the, on your thing, that there is an area over there, why not to the, if you're looking at the diagram to the right side of the property where that open space is, why not put a shed there?
There is a playground that extends there. The survey was done back in 2016 when the house was created. The playground has since extended a bit further. It's a little wider, so I don't really, answering his question, I don't really think it, like you can understand it unless you physically were there. I mean, the property is open. Anyone's welcome to come by and, you know, physically inspect. I thought that was the purpose of signing off, to allow board members to gain access to see prior to the meeting. But I think the pictures I, I sent just really show the, the issue at hand here and the reason for the variance is because of the setbacks and the, the shed ideally would be placed in a, in a decent area in the corner just to simply allow us to get that level of privacy. As far as the, the fences go, I think there are rules against putting fences on fences other than the lack of functionality. It just looks ridiculous. I have a brown fence on one area, a white fence on the other area, a black fence on this area. I'm running out of colors at this point. I think it's just going to look really funny. So I think I made my case, but I, I respect your decision regardless.
Well, the brown fence could be extended to the corner.
The brown fence doesn't belong to me. It belongs to my neighbor.
Right, no, I, no, I understand that, but I'm saying you could add brown fence there to where the white fence is, and then that way that area is sealed off completely.
To do that, I would have to break my pool fence as it's on the property line itself, the pool fence. That's the way it was purchased, the way I bought the home. So to do that, I would have to connect to my neighbor and then basically continue and try to attempt to attach it to my other neighbor. Also, this fence I will add is not something you find locally. It's a very distinct color and it was put in many years ago. It's already discolored. It just, it looks very off.
Any other questions?
Yes. Anthony, are you able to bring this up, this picture? Just the picture that you shared, what I think will help. Yeah, okay. So two things. So currently, a black fence there, right? The height of that is what, four feet?
Four and a half feet.
Right. So for that section that you have the hardship because of the dogs, could you just raise those to be six feet?
Their standard size, so four and a half feet is...
They don't come in six feet?
I don't know. I, this, this is the way I purchased the home. It's a standard pool fence that goes around. To do what you're asking, they would have to break it off and then, but again, it's, it'll solve the height issue, but the dogs being present there and running and startling the kids is, is not something that you want your kids to be in environment when they're really petrified and afraid, especially when they're in the pool, pool's deep. You got kids that are, you know, learning how to swim, coming from a different lifestyle. I, I really don't want to challenge them like that.
Right. So, right, okay. So in your mind, just raising it to six feet, the, the one that's there now, something that looks similar, so you don't have to worry about getting a brown one or a white one or a third color, you just, the one that's there, just raise it up to six feet for that section, that's not an option you feel?
It's not, there's no sense of privacy. There's still the issue of the dogs. Maybe now the concern is that they won't jump over, but they're still present.
Okay, okay. I understand that. Okay, so am I just, so right now, all the grass, right? Even away from the pool. If you, that's not enough space there to put a shed that would meet all the criteria?
You want me to put a shed against, right up alongside the pool?
I don't, well, let me just be clear. I don't want you to do anything. I'm just giving you options, right? Things to think about. You might have thought about this already. Hey, what if I put the fence, you know, somewhere in that green area there and now I have to worry about the zoning board?
So the same challenge you have on the left side you have on the right, it's just strategically better to place it on the left because, you know, get more things accomplished in that specific location.
Right. So all that open grass right now, a shed would not be good to put there instead of the corner?
I mean, you'll run into the same setbacks, the same issues, the same problem. It's just strategically better to close off that specific open area.
Right. Okay, thank you.
If there is any preference, going back to the members here, as far as what you prefer for me to put on the floor, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions. I just offered concrete. It's a more expensive project, but if you feel that that will help solve any vegetation issues or maintenance issues, I'm okay with spending it to do it. But if there's, I think normally the way they do it is they put specific wood frames and then they fill it up with rocks or gravel or something just as a foundation, similar to what I already have over there. If you look near the pool side, right after the stamped concrete, there is like sort of gravel and rocks and stuff. So, I mean, they're probably going to go with the same layout, unless you recommend to do concrete.
I know that's directed towards me, but as a zoning officer, I don't get a say in that. That's your call.
Sorry, I'll shift my attention next to you.
I just, I just approved the location of it. I do just want to point out one more point that the pool filter is shown on the survey. At 15 feet off the left side property line and 15.2 off the rear property line. So if we have a 10-foot wide shed, either at a two or three-foot setback, keep in mind that that pool filter is going to be relatively close to that front wall. Possibly the door may hit it, depending where the door is located. That's all I wanted to point out.
So just to be clear, you're saying that if he was to put it in that corner and we said two, let's just say for the sake of this conversation, two feet off of the rear and two feet off of the side, it may impede the...
So if we only have 15 feet to work with and the shed is 10 feet, with the three feet off the rear property line, that's 13, so you're only two feet to that pool filter.
So, I mean, ideally, based on that, we could go two feet off the property line, two feet from the section of the pool, giving you ample amount of maintenance for both the shrubs or anything else that's in that area, and we'll still be able to get the width and the length, which will still cover that, that area properly.
And Ms. Tubalow, two feet would be ample enough room to be able to use a weed whacker whatever to clean and maintain, correct? Okay. Any other questions?
I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you. So I heard you, sorry. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Board, it's up to us for discussion and a possible motion.
Yeah, we could have a little...
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not close public session. Forgive me. We started talking. I apologize, sir. Please come forward.
Aye.
Please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yep, yes.
And please, please state your name for the record.
Frank Sanoh. I live on Forenzy Road across the street. And just a couple of things. I think the zoning board is important because, you know, keeps everything, the integrity of the neighborhood, you know, everybody has rules, and then if you start setting precedent, you know, while others in the neighborhood all have sheds and everything that were built and located on the properties per zoning setback regulations, that too many exceptions, you know, it's just going to make everything haphazardly different. Also, as an eyesore, and then he mentioned just about the dogs. I mean, it seems like a, a good idea would just put some kind of fabric along the fence that's open there so they won't see any dogs or anything because it seems like a 10 by 20-foot shed just to solve a dog problem is kind of overkill. You could easily put a five by 10-foot shed, setback per the regulations and solve the same problem. And then, and I, again, just finally, I know when he purchased the home, he, with that, with the pool in the backyard, and he knew that the space was likely limited for large sheds. So as you guys have stated, it seems like any kind of undue hardship is, you know, I don't, you know, I don't see any undue hardship. This way, the, the neighborhood keeps a nice consistent maintenance. And again, correct about the shrubs. I have, I have a fence around my property and between two fences, you get trees growing there all the time and it's very hard to cut, hard to maintain between any kind of structures too close to fences and everything. So there's the overgrown shrub issue and everything. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward, sir.
Madam Chair, could I just make one comment? Just, just to remind everyone in here, this board doesn't set precedence. It's been said already a few times this evening. Every case is a case-by-case matter, so there are no precedents on this board. So.
To respond back to one of my neighbors, as far as the maintenance goes, like she had mentioned, there is an ample amount of space underneath the black fence. There's about two or three, I think maybe like a foot off the ground or maybe like six inches off the ground where you can run a weed whacker there to pretty much keep the area clean.
Let, um, is any, let me just do this before I forget again. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak about this application? Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to go ahead and close public session. Mr. Hudak?
Did you install the pool?
No, I purchased the property like this.
With the pool?
With the pool, with the pool fence and everything.
And, and play area, was that there?
Yes.
But you said you expanded.
The play area was expanded a little bit, so the length and the, the width, but the same location.
Because that would have been a perfect corner for that shed. Not expanded.
I hear you.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Yeah, I'd like to get a sound. What are we talking about? Two-foot setback, three-foot setback?
Michael.
What are we talking? What's the final? Two-foot setback, three-foot setback? And what's the base going to be? I mean, what's, I don't know what the applicant's saying he's doing or if that's going to be totally up to us, because there's been so much tossed around, I don't know what the answer is.
I think to, like, maintain everybody's compromise and the level of trying to adjust everybody's concerns, I think two feet off the wall, two feet from the pool equipment really works for everybody and it really accomplishes that, that issues that were brought up.
To clarify, clarify that, you said two feet off the pool equipment? I think we're basing that off of the two fences or property line.
Yeah, so it would be two feet off this black fence on this side and I think two feet off the, where the pool privacy thing goes, that little section over there that hides the pool equipment. So I would just leave another two feet just in case there's some maintenance that needs to be done there.
So I don't know the exact dimensions and placement. I don't think that's on the survey, so we just need to...
It's actually drawn up on the picture. I measured it. One of you guys should have the pictures if you still have them.
What I mean is for zoning purposes, for resolution, we need to have a exact placement for it, I think from the property line.
The survey should also give you that information as the survey that was provided to me did include the distance from the pool privacy fence to the actual wall. I think if I remember correctly, it was 15 feet.
Mr. Hyman, the location of the pool filter was just to keep in mind for the location of the setbacks if we were going for two or three feet off that property line. I think where we are right now is we're discussing whether it be two or three feet off the rear and side property line, so they're both going to be the same setback. But I think the applicant has, has offered a compromise to the board, whether it be two or three feet, but his original request was zero.
Right, so I just want to confirm that we're at two feet from the property line on both sides? Is that what it is?
Yes, so it'd be two feet from...
He's leaving it up to your, the board's discretion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are we open for discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'll just give my opinion. I think two of your residents use words that are, fit what I, I think of, extreme solution and overkill, right? So if the hardship is the dogs, obviously, any type of six-foot fence would solve that problem. And the shed just seems, first of all, it's 10 feet, not six, so that's more, and it just seems like overkill.
The hardship was the layout, if I may...
I'm going to get to that.
Right.
Yeah. As far as the layout and as far as the space available so you could put a shed somewhere, right? The decision to expand the playground was yours. You've decided that expanding the playground was more important than putting a shed there in essence, right? I understand the pool was already there, but you knew that, right? The size of the lot, you knew what it was when you purchased it. I can't see that as a hardship. You knew, you know, you could have bought a house with a one acre on it. I, I just don't see the hardship. So those are my thoughts.
Can I, can I comment? Mr. Martins? Are you, are you saying that the applicant should remove his playground, purchase a different property? This is the property that he's...
No, of course not.
Has and that he's requesting this based off of what he's presenting to us?
No, but what I'm saying is, so, and I know you want to chime in, but, but, right, that's, that's not what I said. What I said was that at the time that it came to make a decision, do I expand the playground or do I put up a shed? The decision he made was to expand the playground. I'm not telling him to undo it. He made that decision. It was a trade-off. We all make trade-offs, right? He made a trade-off. Do I put up a shed or do I expand the playground? Based on the demographics here, he made that decision.
Well, to frame, just to frame it, there's a, you know, the applicant has testified about a hardship. One of the considerations for the board is whether you've considered a hardship and also whether you consider that hardship to be self-created.
Right, so just to understand your train of thought, you're, you're, you're assuming that he had this debate, you know, should I put in a playground or a shed? I mean, to me, it was, it sounds like this is an afterthought. It wasn't necessarily thought out.
Yeah, so, so I think I addressed that in my comments and said whether you've really physically thought about it or not, that's the end game. The end game is you have to make a decision right now. Do I put up a shed or do I reduce the playground? That's your decision. I, I mentioned that, that at the time, you know, these things progress, right? So once you have it, now you're, you're sitting with what you got. You decided to, to, to expand the playground and now you want to put up a shed. The, the question is, can I do it? Do I have enough space? And our zoning laws say you don't.
Should, should he remove his pool because he wants to put up a shed?
Give me a break. Is that what I said?
It's the same...
No, I said it's a trade-off. It's a trade-off. You make a decision.
Some of these hardships are self-imposed, okay? By, he made the decision to expand his, uh, playground without the foresight of deciding, okay, down the road, I'm going to put a shed in, but now I have a, except for in this area, and it doesn't meet the zoning laws. So, you know, in order to get a variance, you have to show a... laws. So, you know, in order to get a variance, you have to show a hardship. And quite frankly, I don't see the hardship. I really don't.
Just to respond to both members of the board, I understand that, you know, the circumstances may look like we expanded the playground, but the playground was already there. There was really nowhere else for me to just shift and relocate the playground. It's a physical structure that's in the ground. I, I don't really see the logic in putting a shed right next to a playground either. So, although I have half an acre, it's quite frankly, really an illusion. Once you put the pool in there, and then once you have the patio landscape that takes up about 80% of the yard, you're dealing with about 20% of area that's open to either vegetation or just general maintenance. So, I understand the concerns, and I understand that neighbors in this situation might, you know, may have went through similar situations and maybe were let down. I think my property size is just very unique, and that's really the hardship. The hardship there is that most properties are, are back-to-back. This is back-to-back with two separate neighbors, and there's really no one solution. If I had my own fence from right to left, it would've been ideal, but I don't. I'm using one of my neighbor's fences and then connecting with my own. There is, I think there is issues putting fence on top of fences, putting privacy screens. It's really not gonna solve anything. The height is the same height. This isn't a massive structure. It's under 200 square feet. It's, it's an ample amount of space to store general maintenance, mowing equipment. I've already explained that there is no electrical, no plumbing. This isn't a frat house. This is just general storage supplies. That's really all it is at this point.
Okay. I, I just have to say it, 'cause I think I have, but kinda sidestepping the issue. You have a half acre. You have a beautiful property. You have a beautiful pool. You have all these beautiful things, the playground, right? Knowing that you have a half acre, having all those other things there, whether they were there before or not, whether you built them or not, is a trade-off, right? Life is a trade-off. You could tear that down or do something else and put up the shed. The fact is, on a half acre, you can't have all of that. And you want all of it. You want the pool. You want the playground. You want this. You want that. And you want the shed. Those are not in the zoning...
He had, but in fairness to Mr. Tac, he has every right as a resident to come to the zoning board to ask for a variance.
Absolutely. I'm not saying against it. Absolutely. Of course you do. And I have the right to say, I don't think you should get the variance. Of course you do. Of course. I'm not saying, absolutely, you're doing the right thing. Oh, absolutely. Better than putting it out there without getting a legal permit and then finding out later. I, I credit you on that. Absolutely. That's, in no way am I saying that.
I, I think that the question for the board...
Hopefully, it hasn't been interpreted that way by anybody here.
So, the question now, as has been framed several times, is, you know, there's an application for variance from the setback. The setback is 15. The applicant has modified his application essentially, or his request, to say that he's requesting two feet on either side. He's testified about the conditions of his property. And, you know, they really, as, as put forward by Mr. Hudek, it's a question of, is there a hardship due to the conditions of the property? We've talked about whether those things are self-created, or whether in the totality of the circumstances, on this individual application, you think that the variance should be granted. I don't know if there is more discussion or a motion of some sort.
I, I have one more discussion. Would the applicant stipulate a storage only and not used for any other purpose?
Hundred percent.
Any other questions or comments?
Does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion. So, I, I will second that emotion. Not emotion. This is not Smokey Robinson. No. I second that emotion. Motion!
Understood. So, there is a motion and a second to deny.
To deny. So, a yes vote would be to deny the variance to put up the shed. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brozzi? Mr. Hyman?
No.
Mr. Hudek? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Such?
No.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. So, Mr. Hudek, the application for the variance is denied. Obviously, you could take the feedback here, and if you make an application for some other variance or something, we'll see you again. But this one was denied. There'll be a motion, I'm sorry, a resolution probably at the next meeting.
Okay, we are gonna move on to applicant number, well, it's applicant number one on the agenda. Applicant JPO Jackson LP, Grant Harmony, Approval Amendment Site Plan 837-2, Block 4801, Lot 5.01, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10. Ms. Jennings.
And I'll remind the board, this is a matter in which I have a conflict. Mr. Shea will be coming up here, and I will leave the room.
Madam, can I have two minutes?
Excuse me?
Can I be excused for two minutes?
The little boy's room.
Oh. Ms. Jennings, just give us two minutes. Somebody has to use the gentleman's room. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Shea.
How you doing? So, we gotta have a phone.
After that, I don't know.
I know. Tell me about it. Let me get my notes. Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lay it all out in the beginning and just, instead of going back and forth, you know?
No worries. Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Walens Goldman &amp; Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, the applicant is here this evening seeking a technical subdivision to permit fee simple ownership of the previously approved inclusionary housing development, and an approval amendment to modify several of the previously approved buildings for a property located at Harmony Road and identified as Block 4801, Lots 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10 on the township's tax maps. The property is approximately 45.6 acres and located in the LC zone. Over the course of several hearings, the board had granted a de-use variance to permit multifamily housing at the property, and a C variance for the height of the accessory clubhouse building. The property will be developed with 195 residential units, including 40 affordable units, the clubhouse, and various other site amenities. With respect to the technical subdivision, the applicant is looking solely to convert the ownership structure of the market rate units for condominium to fee simple ownership. This is done to improve the marketability of the units. There will still be an HOA to maintain the common areas. The affordable housing structure will remain a separate HOA. It will have full access to all the amenities enjoyed by the owners of the market rate units. And the technical subdivision will modify the prior approval solely with respect to ownership of the market rate units. It will not have any effect on the approved structures or the site operations. We have this evening with me Ian Borden, who will testify on behalf of the applicant. And we are in receipt of one review letter from the board's engineer dated May 22nd, 2025.
Good evening, Mrs. Jennings. So, you guys heard me coughing from the background now, so you can hear me coughing from up here. So, a little short of breath at the moment, but just bear with me. So, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of fill in the gaps a little bit, just, and piggyback off of what Donna Jennings, Ms. Jennings just said. All right, I got that right. All right. So, this thing's got a little bit of a tortured history. So, in 2020, it came before the zoning board for D1 variance. In 2021, it came back before the zoning board for preliminary, final, major site plan approval. 2024, it came back before the board again for preliminary and final major site plan approval. In this situation, there's, there's been almost five years of engineering review, which, which is kinda wild. But it also goes to the extent by which all the professionals at township have, have looked at this project, which is, is a good thing. Bad for escrow fees on behalf of the, in the applicant, but, you know, good, good for the township. So, in February of 2025, the township engineer, the, the issue of lot lines apparently came up between the applicant and the township engineer in approximately February 2025 from, from my discussions with the township engineer. And, and the township engineer recommended that the applicant come back before the board for some kind of administrative approval. Now, so, and just so the zoning board is familiar with the process, what happens is that there's different ways of obtaining lot line approval. So, one of the ways the applicant could've done it was, would be by submitting an application to the DCA for condominium approval. DCA approves it. That then goes to the township tax assessor. Tax assessor then gives lot and block numbers. So, that's one avenue. But they, they listen to the township engineer, filed for administrative approval, and they're back before it. So, this is kind of the perfect example of a checks and balancing system actually working in a township, which is kinda unique. We, from our perspective, the board, we typically don't see this, which is kinda, for me, that's, I'm, you know, a nerd. So, it's kinda, it's kinda cool seeing the checks and balancing system play out. The applicant is using, is seeking relief under ordinance 244-57.2 for the technical subdivision relief. There's another ordinance which falls within the jurisdiction of the board. It's 244-23 for that administrative approval, subject to township engineer write-off, which is a good thing, which I think is where he was leading with, with requesting the applicant come back before the zoning board. So, this is kind of a perfect example of the checks and balancing system of the township playing out in the way that it should be. And the applicant operating in good faith and coming back before the board to resolve a couple of issues that, it's kind of like a Maya Koopa situation where, where the applicant, you know, probably should've had the lot lines hashed out in the last two preliminary and final applications, but they didn't for whatever reason. I don't know if that's because they were, you know, gonna seek the DCA approval, or whatever it was. But be that as it may, we're, we're here now. And, and really, there's two different avenues of, of granting relief, so to speak, that the board can take into consideration. So, here's where we're at.
Have Mr. Borden sworn in, and he's gonna go through it. And I think one of the things the board members should keep in mind is absolutely nothing is really changing with the actual approval that you already done. We've already started site improvements. It really is just an ownership of the market rate units, the ground beneath the units. So, no one's really gonna know driving by, oh, that unit, somebody owns the land underneath it, as opposed to, oh, that unit, they don't own the land underneath it. So, I don't think anybody is really gonna know the difference. I don't think that's an engineering feat. I don't think it's a planning feat. It's really just a legal issue of ownership of the land underneath the building. So, if Ian could get sworn in, and we can begin.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please spell your name and say your last with the record.
Oh, we have the share.
Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Licensed Professional Planner in St. Louis, Jersey.
And the board accepts your credentials?
We accept your credentials.
Since we have no idea who you are?
Thank you. Yes, the two attorneys have summarized it very well. So, let me, it's what I have to say, which is a good thing. We'll, we'll focus on the fact that you guys did a good job, not what, what I might do.
We're doing our job for you, man. Come on.
But, but very quickly, just, I think it is a very simple thing, but just, we have four exhibits. Exhibit A1 is on the, on the screen. The project is in, in the yellow boundary. You see the project is cleared. This, this, this aerial is about six months old, so the site improvements have been completed. Either three or four of the buildings are, are, are being constructed in this area. County Line Road is on the bottom here. And then Harmony Road is, is to the right. Exhibit A2, please, Anthony. And the two components of this application is, the first, the first one is what we call the, uh, the modification of building corners. And here we have, you might wanna go to the, this is the overall plan. It's, it's a little hard to see here. This was, these, these plans, this plan and the remaining two plans were all submitted to the board. This is building corner display plan sheet one of two. And there's circled, little red circles where we have a few buildings. Go to the third one, Anthony. I think it'll be easier to, to see. And here we have various building corners where, and here's, to use one example, where, what we're seeking is simply squaring off the building. See how the, I'm kinda blocking it with the thing here, but the buildings were kinda cut in. We're just squaring them off. And we're proposing that at buildings 14, 17, 18, 19, and 21. This is, will improve the floor plans of the buildings to a more rectangular footprint. We will maintain a minimum spacing between the buildings at 20 feet. So, that's, that's the one request. And then the second request, as, as mentioned, was the form of ownership, and that would be the next sheet. Please, Anthony. As, as noted, as a mechanism to create the fee simple ownership of the townhouse lots, we are seeking to subdivide those to create small lots for each townhouse unit. The lot lines would run down the sidelines of each unit, would encompass the front yard from the back of the sidewalk to, to the rear yard, create a small rear yard. And, and all, all of the area in between parking, roadways, recreation, clubhouse would all be under the homeowners association. Control is a common area lot. Again, this can be accomplished, as was noted by the attorneys, as a DCA with a condominium filing. But fee simple lots being created on a subdivision such as this would be better for mortgages and for title transfer to the future owners. These are townhouse units. They will be purchased individually. So, that, that's really the extent of our request. I believe Mr. Shea had mentioned 244-23 of the ordinance. That is the application procedures. And as noted, under item H of that is entitled administrative approvals. And there are certain proofs required in that that I believe we meet, and I'll briefly review them. And as Mr. Shea had noted, there's two options under administrative approval. One, it can be granted by the township engineer. The second one, it can be created by the land use board, whether it be the zoning board or the planning board. The township engineer has asked us to appear here. So, that's why we are here. And the performance criteria under this section is that the changes have no effect on the purpose and intent of the initial approval. Certainly, it does not. We don't change the number of units. We don't change the site improvements, the drainage, the parking... the parking, the access, none of that is changed by this proposal. To continue, the changes do not diminish setbacks or location of improvements. Again, we're not changing any of those. Does not, does not increase the dimension of any building or facility beyond 10% of the original approval. Again, the, the building corner display that we did does not even come close to, to a 10%, it's just a squaring off of a few feet of, of, of only, I believe it was four buildings, providing that all of the requirements and stipulations of the approval have been met. And we are now proposing to change any of the stipulations of the original approval. Again, this project has met resolution compliance, has posted all the bonds, is under construction, the site improvements have been primarily completed, and the buildings are under construction. So in my opinion, we clearly meet the, the limitations under the administrative approval section of the ordinance, 244-23H, and request administrative approval to allow us to file this subdivision map as a technical subdivision. And I should also note that a technical subdivision is permitted under the ordinance in the town under a different zone. We had received a use variance for this project, which is why that section doesn't apply to this property, but the technical subdivision does apply in other zones in the town. So we're simply trying to apply those standards, and that just simply defines how the map is prepared and what it's required to provide, which is what this map does. But again, it's a process, we believe the appropriate process provide the ownership for the individual townhouses in a much better way than simply doing the condominium document.
Can I have an opportunity to review the written letters?
Yes, yes.
Are there any particular points that you would like to address?
I, I do not. I believe, we, we agree to comply. Generally, the comments are met file law type comments. Actually, there is one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one. Yes, thank you. I almost forgot that. Thank you, Donna. Yes, item 12 of his letter asks for any restrictions or any proposed uses. I, I had mentioned that the townhouse lots are gonna extend into the rear yard, so the property lines extend along the sidelines of each townhouse and into the backyard. So a common question on this type of subdivision is what would the individual townhouse owners be permitted to do in their rear yards? Would they be allowed to put a shed in? Would they be allowed to put fences in? And the answer is, as advised by my client, Orleans is the, is the builder here, that there is, the DCA documents do not permit the homeowners to build fences or sheds. Having said that, the builder, Orleans, will be building a six-foot privacy, six-foot-high privacy fence extending from the rear of each building back about 10 feet. And the idea there is, they have patios in the back of these units. And the idea of that is to allow, if I'm on my patio, I can't see my neighbor on his patio. That, that's the extent of that improvement. So that is a short piece of fence that will be identical between each unit to be constructed by the developer when he builds the building. Beyond that, there is, and we accept the limitation in the approval, that there is not permitted any other fences or sheds on any of these lots. Obviously, the concern there is that if we don't limit those, possibility is they could appear for variances and whatnot, and that's not the intent.
And they'll, they'll be uniform in nature, right? So...
The fences will be uniform, part of the original building.
Yeah.
And the homeowners association documents are recorded, so it becomes part of the record.
That's correct. So in addition to the, any condition of this board approval, it's contained in the court filing of the homeowner documents.
So I do need to be corrected, they said fences are ultimately six-foot in height.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read it wrong. It's been a long day. I read my, my notes wrong. The six-foot fence does not, does not end six feet from the, from the building, it goes to the rear line. I'm sorry, I read my notes wrong. So the six-foot fence would extend to the, to the, to the rear line of the lots.
No homeowner would be allowed to shed or any spot or any other type of structure that would be four lots.
And the, and the rear yard, the rear lot line cannot be fenced. Otherwise, I don't have any objection to the, to the Morgan Engineering Review. He, he does make some questions, like item 11 asks about the full scope of the HOA. That was all discussed and approved in the original approvals. That's all contained in the resolutions that already exist. The HOA maintains all of the parking, drainage, roadways, et cetera.
And that's technically the direct testimony that we have. I'm sorry, are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Romar?
Yes, the subdivision of land, I, I don't have an issue per se from an engineering standpoint, but I did just wanna make sure those concerns were put on the record on how we would handle if there were accessory structures proposed. And I believe that if the HOA documents specifically prohibit those types of structures, that would address my concern. I have not been able to review and confirm that yet, but that could be a condition of approval should the board look favorably tonight. And also that, the fact that the HOA is still gonna maintain the common areas, that, that takes care of another concern. And if they agreed to everything else in the letter, I'd have no other comments at this time.
The applicant stipulates to that?
Yeah, but I just wanna make sure the record's clear, that the, the future homeowners could put the fence across the back if they wanted. Would have to be uniform with the fence that's already being installed by the developer.
So it would all be the same?
Same, all the same material, same height.
And that's to match what's in between?
Right, exactly. So you wouldn't have like the last person with the mismatch of fences all over the place, which didn't look very nice.
And that's gonna be set forth in the recorded documents, which is part of the clerk's office and...
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. So we're on the same page. So the HOA is going to maintain the common area, the roadways, all that stuff. Someone's backyard is no longer common, that is, the, up to the individual. So typically, in a community, obviously, HOA monitors, they police, if you will, how everybody maintains their yards, their property. So what you're saying is it could be a free-for-all in everyone's backyard. They can let the grass grow, they could throw hundreds of toys, they could do whatever they want in their backyard, because since the HOA is not responsible for this, it's every individual homeowner's responsibility for their yard and what goes in it.
That probably is more of a question for the actual developer, as opposed to Ian, so he can, he's here, maybe we could have him sworn in, but maybe go through any other questions for Ian first, and then we can have him come up.
Okay.
Sure. Anybody, anybody else for Mr. Borden, or?
No, I think my question is more suited for, sorry, I think my question is more suited for the developer as well.
Perfect. I think someone over here.
Thank you. My question is looking at the final plat for the major subdivision. We have a 20-foot-wide drainage easement in the back of at least building 14 that I can see. How does the new proposal affect that? Ian, I'm sorry, I'm playing catch-up on this, too.
It doesn't affect that at all.
Because it's showing that we are doing building 14, at least that bottoms, that building 14 south, it's showing a red outline of your expansion of your building line, as well as that deck. That doesn't, that doesn't cross into the drainage easement, because that's not shown on this building corner display.
No, no, we, we maintain the drainage easement.
Okay, there's nothing gonna be in there?
No.
And no fence encroachment either? I know we were discussing fences, and it's not proposed at this time, but I just wanna put that on the record and testimony.
No fences are permitted in the drainage easement.
The applicant will stipulate that?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Romar?
Yes, just one more item. I just want everyone to be clear, so the, the HOA will be in charge of all the common areas, which includes the roadways, the parking lots, the trash pickup, the sidewalks, stormwater facilities, landscaping and snow removal. Really, the only, the properties being divided off are for the townhouse units individually, correct?
Yes. Just to piggyback off my other question, sorry. The building extension that you have labeled on the building corner display plans that are, it says typical in parentheses, are we changing the architectural plans from what was already approved? Ian?
For the rear corners of those units, yes, just the rear corners.
Was that provided? I don't think I have a copy of that. Are we adding, it's just extra space, we're not adding any additional rooms or anything like that?
No, no.
Is it just like a larger kitchen?
Yes.
What does that extension consist of?
Just a few square feet to square the building, it doesn't change the numbers of bedrooms or anything.
Okay, and it's pushing that deck back as well, correct?
Yes.
And the applicant will, once again, stipulate that?
And then we're having stairs come down from those decks?
I'm sure we are, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, just because...
Nothing, nothing changes, you're, you're getting into the original approval, nothing changes with the decks from the original approval.
Well, 'cause you're saying building extension typical, so we are moving back the building line, then we are now moving the deck, and I'm asking about stairs because that would come into question, the distance in between the buildings, also with your setbacks and make sure that it complies.
I didn't hear a question, I just heard a statement.
Well, that's, I'm justifying my question, Ian. So you're saying nothing changes the original approval, but this is saying building extension typical. So you're moving the building line back, you're expanding, correct? But you just said you're adding living space.
Yes.
Not a bedroom, but just living space in general. Then you are moving the deck back, everything is moving back to, towards that rear property line. And then I'm asking about the stairs, because depending where they are, could conflict your information on the space in between your dwelling units and your decks, and it also has to do with the setbacks.
Well, the, the stairs don't count against the spacing between buildings, number one. And number two, none of these building corner that we're seeking to expand are located near the perimeter of the project, so there is no setback concern. These are all internal buildings within the project, so there's no setback concerns.
I'll defer to Mark on that one. It's going about, because we're moving the building extension as well as the deck, everything's kinda get pushed back, so I asked about the stair location, because that may, may or may not conflict with the space in between the buildings and the decks. And it also may cause an issue with setbacks. So Mr. Borden had stated that we don't count stairs for the space in between buildings, and because it doesn't, it won't affect the setbacks for each individual lot, is that accurate?
I'd have to confirm that.
Okay, so we'll have to circle back to that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Peters, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Borden had spoken about the technical subdivision, and I just wanted the record to be clear that the ordinance itself doesn't define a technical subdivision, except in a section of the ordinance that deals with a particular zone. So that's part of what I would assume is the application this evening. They're asking to utilize the technical subdivision standards as part of this amendment, approval amendment, as it relates to what amounts to condo law. So we don't take any exception to it, I just want the record to be clear that the next guy down the road can't walk in and say, well, I just wanna do a technical subdivision. Technical subdivision portion of the Jackson Township Land Use Ordinance exists in one zone for the parcel of land out on 537 next to Great Adventure. It doesn't exist anywhere else in town, it's not defined in town, it's a subset of a section of an ordinance specific to one zoning district in town. That being said, my, my only caution both to the applicant and the board is, this original application was a use variance in a site plan, there were some design standards. The original applicant wasn't a builder, it was very apparent during that time, Mr. Stevens was the applicant's engineer and planner for that application. I recall, I was on the board. They initially put what amounted to boxes on the plan. So these builder-specific changes are not unusual, they occur. When they reach that sort of threshold level where we're not 100% sure, I think the township engineer did the right thing by saying, yeah, you should just come back to the board and double-check. To that end, because this was a use variance, there is no zoning, so to speak. They came in and said, we're gonna use, and I'm gonna paraphrase, we're gonna use the townhome zone as a guide, which, it's apparent they've consistently done that with these I preach this both at the zoning board and at the planning board, where I serve as the board planner. It's important to make sure that when the board's done, that the board through its resolution approves what the applicant's asking for in a manner that the zoning officer can process permits subsequently. Because when that doesn't happen, when the original builder of this project put boxes on the plan, and the engineer at the time for the board signed off on the plans, and then a new builder showed up with new plans, the zoning officer said, what's going on? So it's always important for the board to make sure that our resolution specifies what's being asked, so that the applicant gets what they're looking for, and it's easy for our zoning department to process the permits when they come in. So while this may seem like a lot of rigamarole to get these changes done, it's important because we expect, as the board of adjustment, that the zoning officer does what we expected them to have done. And the way to make sure that that's done correctly is by getting good testimony from the applicant and getting a finely worded resolution from our board attorneys. So I think we're doing that here this evening. I just wanted to point out to the board, because there was a lot of discussion about a lot of things, this is sort of the normal course of events when a project gets sold to another builder, or a project gets approved by someone who's not gonna build the project. Thank you.
And ju, just to be clear, so also, what was kinda interesting about 244-23, because I haven't really seen it a lot, I've seen it a couple times in other townships, I haven't seen it a whole lot. There's an inbuilt condition of approval inside of the ordinance itself, which requires the township engineer to sign off on any changes that, that the board approves. So, so there's kind of an internal checks and balancing system that's built into it, which is, I mean, kinda good for everybody, you know? So, so Mr. Romar is still gonna have to do resolution compliance through his end, through his engineering, and then there's also kind of a double built-in, I wouldn't say veto card, but I mean, it's kind of where the township engineer as, has to sign off on what the board's gotta do. So it's, it works both ways, it's, it's kinda good, you know?
Madam Chair, I have one quick question for Mr. Borden. Just so I understand, what about, for things that fall under common, what about facade of the buildings and the roof? Where does that fall? Is that an HOA issue, or is that an individual home issue?
If that's an HOA issue, probably a better question.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Borden? Ms. Jennings?
Yeah, this time I'd like to call up the developer's name.
Good evening. My name's Larry Dugan.
Hang on a second. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and spell your last with the record.
My name is Larry Dugan, D-U-G-A-N, and I am with the developer, JPO Jackson.
All right, you'd be testifying as a fact witness, and...
Right, he's testifying as a fact witness, and could you just give what's your position with the applicant?
I'm senior vice president at the company, so I'm responsible for land acquisition entitlements. I'm actually also, I don't like to admit it, but an attorney licensed to practice in New Jersey, I try not to.
My condolences.
Yeah, probably, yes. Donna will kick me. I just wanted to respond to a couple of questions from the board. I know there was a question as to the landscaping in this community, the way the HOA documents are structured, that the landscaping will be maintained by the HOA, whether it's in the open space or on a lot, except if the backyard of the lot is fenced in, then the unit owner will be responsible. But otherwise, the landscaping will be maintained by the HOA, snow removal will also be by the HOA, as well as the trash removal. Snow removal will also be by the HOA, as well as the trash removal here.
So what happens if somebody puts a fence up and they just basically let the grass grow three feet, throw garbage all over the place? What happens?
The HOA still has responsibility, can come in and to cure that by cutting the grass and filing an assessment lien against that unit owner. The, so the building itself, the townhome, the roofs, the siding, are all maintained by the individual unit owner. So they will not be the HOA responsibility. But the HOA has architectural restrictions in the documents. So someone cannot come in and paint their house pink or, you know, whatever, do improvements. The improvements would have to be approved by the Architectural Review Committee of the HOA.
But if someone's siding comes flying off in a storm, it's the homeowner's responsibility?
Yes, it is.
But then again, they decided that, you know, "Doesn't bother me. I'm going to leave my siding off." The HOA then has the right to step in and enforce some sort of stipulation saying that it must be repaired?
That's correct.
Just one question, if I may. Just my understanding, so the HOA has the right to step into my backyard and see how good I'm doing?
If the HOA receives a complaint about someone not maintaining their property, they have the right to enter upon that property and to notice that unit owner. If the unit owner doesn't comply, then the HOA has the right to come in and basically fix it.
Right. But first, obviously, it has to be, somebody has to make a complaint. You can't just go in there and... Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just piggybacking off that, so what happens is that most HOA documents have like a probable cause standard in it. It's similar to code enforcement, something like that, where it's almost like a criminal-type standard, where if there's enough probable cause of reasonable suspicion, if you want to kind of use those layman terms, then they have the ability to go in and do an inspection. So it's, some HOAs, the good HOA documents typically have a clause in like that for a provision for inspection.
Mr. Hudek? Why the change? Why do you need to do it this way?
Well, I, as I think the previous testimony was, we were not involved at the outset, right? So we acquired the property from the owners who got the use variance. It is preferable for the mortgage market and for unit owners to have fee simple because they own the land, right? A lender, it's easier to underwrite owning the house and the land than it is a condominium. Condominiums are subject to more underwriting. The projects have to be reviewed by Fannie and Freddie Mack. And so there's more availability in the mortgage market if the people own what I'm going to call fee simple as opposed to condominium.
I understand why fee simple is best. I was just wondering why that's not the get-go.
I can't answer that because we weren't involved in the use variance.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Gina.
Hi. Kind of what we're running into and what we're seeing a lot in our zoning office is people finishing garages to add living space. Is that something that you will allow or how will you address it?
We don't allow it. We will provide draft documents. We have draft documents of the HOA to the township professionals. I think that's a comment in the review letter.
Okay.
So you can provide comments, but we do not allow garages to be finished.
Okay. That's regardless of what building it is, what ownership type. It's regardless of what building, what ownership type. We're not permitting it whatsoever. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Romar, Mr. Peters?
If we wanted to get nitpicky, the finishing of basements would invalidate the parking for the site.
I'm sorry, say it again?
It would invalidate the parking calculations for the site. The site relies upon, I'm sorry, garages. If someone were to try to finish a garage, it's part of their RSIS parking compliance calculation. At some point in time, again, this is an entire site. The idea that we're creating individual lots for financing purposes aside, if people were permitted to finish off garages, they would be taken out of the parking calculation. And I don't think the site would comply with the parking calculations.
Yeah, and that's a genuine reason. Why?
It's in the documents, so they don't finish the garages. They need that for the parking.
So I think the town's fairly well-covered. The applicant's indicated it's in the documents. It's part of the original site plan resolution. If it's done illegally, it becomes an enforcement issue.
Thank you. Mr. Romar, you had a question earlier about something you weren't able to confirm, about the steps, the deck.
The question was whether the stairs would be included in the setback. I was not able to locate any code that specifically discussed that. Gina, do you have anything on that?
Just for the sake of continuity, how we review applications at this time is that we do include any stairs as they do have to abide by the setbacks. And that does include the space in between houses. I haven't had the opportunity to work with a lot of this multi-dwelling-type applications. So that's why I kind of deferred to Mark on that one. And if, I mean, we can always circle back and try to get a little bit clearer of an answer. But I do, just, I needed to make the point where Mr. Borden was saying that nothing changed. Yes, the dwelling was expanded and everything was shifted backward. So I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you.
Well, we're not seeking a variance. So if they do the technical review and something comes up, then flag it and...
Right. It would be kicked back to the board, essentially.
Any other questions or comments? Given that there's no other questions or comments, do you have any other witnesses? Mrs. Jennings, excuse me.
I do that two or like three times a meeting, it's fine.
No worries. No, no additional questions. That's our direct testimony.
Do you want to make a closing statement now or would you like it opened to the public first?
I think you should open it to the public first.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward at this time about testimony that you heard this evening about this project, please feel free to do so at this time.
We can combine general with cross just for purposes of...
Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public sessions. Ms. Jennings, your closing statement.
Yes, thank you. So I think the fact that we're not changing any of the infrastructure, the improvements are already started, and it really is just trying to switch it out so that it could be fee simple ownership. Again, I think it's really a distinction without a difference, and we would respect that the board would grant an approval, subject to all the conditions that we stated on the record.
Thank you. Board, it's up to us for the comments and discussion and potential motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Bresi?
Based on a testimony of our professionals, that this is not a rare occurrence. There's no major change. There's no bedroom count change. There's no traffic change. It's basically the same footprint, except for a couple of square feet on the end of the buildings. The distance between the buildings still maintain over 20 feet. And all the stipulations were set for it with the HOC, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion, a second?
Mr. Bresi?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Miss, Dr. Hofstein?
He's down here.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Hudek? Ms. Rosal?
She's out too.
Why? Sorry. So sorry.
I'm here.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Sutch?
Yes.
Ms. Brad?
Yes.
So much. Have a good evening.
Good to see you again.
Traffic engineer, Michael Intili, a design engineer, and Allison Coffin, a planner. Those four witnesses' testimony was concluded. I placed on the record that we had concluded their testimony. Those four witnesses were examined by the board, and we placed on the record that the board had completed their examination of those four witnesses. Similarly, the board's professionals examined those four witnesses, and we placed on the record that that examination concluded. The chair opened it up to the public a number of times during the hearings, sufficient so that each and every one of the witnesses who testified was examined, cross-examined by the public, and that was brought to a conclusion. The applicant asked for permission to come to this meeting tonight without those professionals, and they were expressly excused from coming to the meeting this evening. We have no testimony. I have nothing further to present to the board. There will come a moment when the matter is concluded, the objector's case is concluded, and I'll ask for an opportunity to do a brief summation. But this evening, it's my understanding that the evening is for the purpose of Mr. Paul Revere, who is an objector, to present his case to the board. And we're prepared to take notes and listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and at the conclusion of the last hearing in which this matter was considered, as Mr. Pape said, he had put these matters on the record and rested, reserving the right to make a closing statement after the objector's case, which is his right. And at that time, there was colloquy with Mr. Revere, the objector, and he was advised that he would be given the opportunity to present his case at this next hearing. He has that opportunity now. The board has been provided through Secretary Dawn with documents that were submitted by Mr. Revere. Mr. Revere had stated his intention to have 90 minutes of testimony, of course, that we reserve, or of his objector's case in total. Obviously, the board reserves its right, given under the law, to cut off any duplicative Mr. Revere, did you want to proceed?
Okay.
Mr. Martins, were you planning on leaving the room as you have a conflict in this matter?
Yeah.
Since I just had a conflict, I can tell you there are two chairs up there, outside.
Okay, I'd like to borrow that microphone while you're not using it.
There you go. And, Mr. Revere, I, of course, would like to swear you in.
My name is Paul Revere. I'm at West Commodore Boulevard, Jackson.
Bonnie Revere, 1009 West Commodore Boulevard, Jackson, New Jersey.
I'm going to ask you both if you're both going to provide testimony, and I would ask that you provide testimony one at a time, but if you could raise your right hand and you swear that this testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth and nothing but the truth. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there is some clarification. Now, I know, after a year of waiting, I am only allowed to present my case once.
That is correct.
And right now, we only have five voting members.
That is also correct.
Okay, the last time, the attorney, Mr. Pape, we questioned an adjournment when he had six voting members. He wanted a full seven. Now, I'm concerned about me putting on my presentation now and having Mr. Pape ask for an adjournment because there's five people up here, five voting members. And I'm also concerned, if he decides, if I decide to proceed, will he wait, after he asks for his adjournment, will he wait to make his final presentation among the people who will be voting? And that's a sequential thing, and that kind of a sequence, I am saying, is unfair to me.
So, Mr. Revere, two things. One, Mr. Pape does have the right, as you would, to ask for a continuance of this matter. Mr. Pape is not required to make that determination now, prior to your presentation, whether he would ask for a continuance on that basis. Equally, you do have the right, if you wish to ask for a continuance because there are only five members, you have that right as well.
Okay, and there's, I have two more questions before I just make my decision asking adjournment. One on one is, have the zoning members received my objection materials?
As I stated earlier, perhaps you didn't hear me, those materials were sent to the board by Ms. D'Agostino.
Can I ask them if they've received it?
No.
Okay, you did. Did you receive the New Jersey DEP letter saying that this applicant has no permits or approvals whatsoever?
All the information that you sent to Ms. D'Agostino was submitted by her, disseminated by her, to the board.
Did everybody receive that New Jersey DEP email to me?
Yeah.
I'm just going to poll them because I don't know if they're on board here.
Yeah, Mr. Revere, you don't have the right to poll the board. The information that you sent to Ms. D'Agostino was sent directly by her to all board members.
Okay, now, the last time we had an adjournment, it's required, if you have an adjournment over 30 days, you have to re-advertise in the newspaper.
Renote.
You have to re-note in the newspaper. I'm going to ask you if the applicant did that in accordance with the law.
The applicant, believe my recollection, was that this was carried with no requirement for further notice.
Well, I don't know if he did. I want to know if he did or not.
No, she's saying he did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Revere, this is your opportunity to make your case, and I know that you have experience in these matters, so let's remind you, as the objector, you don't have your opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Pape and his witnesses, was when he made his case and put his witness on, you had that opportunity. So now, this is your opportunity to make your case.
I just want to, okay, just want to cite the law. It's New Jersey SA 40:55D-10 and 40:55D-11. It says, "If a hearing adjourned for more than 30 days, new public notice must be given."
Okay, so that's a point that you have made on the record and preserved that argument.
And your answer was, there was no public notice.
My recollection was this matter.
In accordance with this, I just want to get things clear. I don't want to get in back and forth.
Right, I don't want to get in back and forth either. So, as I said, you have made your point, you are making your record.
Okay. Well, I need to talk to my wife about our decision on adjournment.
All right.
Because I'm certainly not going to make my 90-minute presentation, and then have him ask for an adjournment, and then him have his closing argument at the next date, and I'm not allowed to say anything.
You have the information, if you would like to take a couple of minutes with the boards, and I would ask you to have that conversation now and make your determination.
Okay, thank you. The big risk is that I do my objector presentation, Mr. Pape asks for an adjournment, and then we get together again, and Mr. Pape has the last, you know, presentation, and mine is basically forgotten. Okay, so we're going to ask for an adjournment or a continuation.
Okay, so you're asking for a continuation of this matter in total so that you could put on your objector testimony when there is a full board?
Well, is he going to tell me that, is he going to guarantee he's not going to ask for an adjournment after I do my presentation? I mean, that's fair to ask. It's just common fairness.
I had had that conversation, as I believe I told you before, I did speak to Mr. Pape about that. Mr. Pape advised that he was not, was not prepared to make that determination until after he heard your case.
All right, well, I believe it's most fair that after I make my presentation, he makes his presentation and not have it be done, his presentation done a month later with a new group of people. This is a very serious matter for us, okay? There's, I don't want to, all right.
Through the chair?
Okay.
Through the chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Attorney, my understanding is that if this were to go ahead and it would be adjourned before a vote tonight, any member that is not here tonight that would want to be able to vote on it when they do come back would need to watch your objection that you're giving tonight, so.
That's not the point.
No matter what it is, if there's going to be a vote with a full board, they would have all watched the entire thing.
That's not the point. The point, we just, we want to go for the continuance because your point is not what we're, is not the point we're making. The point we're making is that we want to give our objector presentation and then have Mr. Pape make whatever he has to say, his summary, and then the board votes. We want to do those two things together. And I understand that that is what you desire, that, to the point that I had made earlier and Mr. Hyman just made, and certainly you have been in enough of these hearings to be well aware, that that frequently is the case, many matters, including this one, are heard over multiple days and multiple hearing dates, and they're not always the same board members present. The board members then watch the hearings and certify that they've done so. So I understand what you're saying, but legally, that, you know, the boards moving forward and the reviewing of the tape and certifying of having seen it is legally sufficient for the board members to act.
I thought you just gave us the option of doing that.
I said that you had the right to make the request, and you've made the request.
So, in our estimation, our objector case is very strong, especially on the fact that there are no approvals, and it's the law saying you have to have an LOI to even be heard on the board. I think our best bet is to wait for enough people to hear our case to be the most effective. I don't want any more underhanded nonsense here. I don't want it.
All right, so, Mr. Revere, you, Mrs. Revere, you've made your request. I would ask you that you give the microphone back to Mr. Pape and sit down, and I will have some colloquy with Mr. Pape.
Excuse me, I forget to insinuate that there's underhandedness by the board here is not okay. And I take exception.
I'm not talking about the board doing underhanded nonsense.
You said this underhand.
I did not refer to you or the board like that. If you, that's a misunderstanding, and if you, if you took it that way, I apologize. All right?
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry if I did offend you, I didn't mean to. I wouldn't do that to volunteers. I just want to get some.
Truth?
On the table. Truth. And I wanted some fairness.
Okay, Mr. Revere, you have made your position clear. I ask again if you would give the microphone back to Mr. Pape and have a seat, and we'll proceed from there.
Because I don't believe Mr. Pape is going to let the board vote.
I understand. Please.
Can you give him back the microphone, please, and have a seat so we can proceed? Thank you.
Bonnie. Oh, we can sit down now?
Yes, please do, actually.
She didn't tell me, she ran away.
Madam Chair, board members, what date would you like us to return so that Mr. Revere can make his presentation?
I know we're heading into, just because I know this issue had come up, do we have dates available at this time?
Dawn had said, anything to be carried, please use the August 6th date or August 20th.
August 16th or 20th?
Sixth.
Oh, sixth or 20th, that may, if we're able to get to the top of the agenda on the 6th, it works for us.
There's only two currently on the 6th, two applications.
I hope it's not a shed.
And currently, no applications on the 20th, Jean.
All right, so.
Mr. Pape, did you hear that? There's two on the 6th and none on the 20th.
If I went to the 20th, would I have the top of the agenda?
I don't see why not.
Then I'd ask that you place us on the 20th at the top of the agenda. And notwithstanding the recitation of what Mr. Revere stated was the law, I do believe that the law does not require renotice or republication when you're before a board and the board takes action on an adjournment. So I would ask that this matter be carried to the date of August 20th without renotice or republication. or republication, and that it be announced this evening as is permitted.
Okay, so, Mr. Revere, did you hear this matter is going to be on August twentieth? It will be the first item on the agenda on that date, and it is being carried to that date without necessity for further notice.
Why wouldn't it be noticed?
Because, as I said, you have made your record on what you believe is required. Do you not believe that legally, that the additional notice is required?
So, we don't have to follow the law, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that our interpretation of the law is different than yours, and we are not requiring that notice. We do not believe that it is legally required. You have made your statement as to what your belief is, and therefore, you have preserved that issue.
Okay.
So, with that on the record, we'll see you on August twentieth. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, who'd act if we didn't do that?
Uh, I'll do that.
Okay. Unless you're, yeah. I know that is a conflict, same with Mr. Romar from Morgan Engineering. So we are going to get started with Cardinal Lee and Jackson Crossing Two, Adventure Crossing Minor Subdivision fourteen twenty-nine. Mr. Alferi, I know I don't have to tell you this, I know you're well aware, we take testimony until ten thirty.
That's fine.
And you know we only have-
Five, that's, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Salvatore, Alferi, on behalf of the applicant. At the last meeting, we had concluded our presentation and testimony relating to the site plan aspect of the application. The board opened it to the public, and the public session was concluded too. We were unable to go to a vote because we needed to perfect, or get an approval for a minor subdivision to add land to this property, so that there is no question about the residential lot unit density. So we agreed at the last meeting to carry it to tonight, hear the subdivision application. If the subdivision application's approved, then the density issue's off the table, and then you can go to the vote on the site plan. Reminder, on the site plan, it was a variance-free, or is a variance-free, application. It was multiple hearings, I understand, and tonight, we're here again just to discuss the subdivision, and then request you vote on that, and then immediately thereafter, vote on the site plan. Ian Borden, our planner, is gonna be our only witness, however, we do have our engineer here, if there are specific engineering issues, and the applicant's present as well, if there are questions of the applicant. We'd request, since this is a separate application, that we have Mr. Borden sworn in and qualified.
Mr. Borden, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth? And, Mr. Borden, I believe you've put your qualifications on the record many times, and it's possible the board may just accept them.
This board will absolutely accept your-
Thank you so much.
And then just note for the record that Mr. Peters did issue a report dated May twenty-ninth relating to the subdivision, which was one of the reasons why we couldn't proceed last meeting, and therefore, we're gonna discuss, as part of our testimony, we'll address the comments that he has in his report. So Ian, would you run through the, for the board, what the subdivision details are, please?
Yes. So, under the ACMU zone that applies to this project, the highway commercial mixed-y zone, there is a provision in the ordinance that allows a technical subdivision. Earlier tonight, we talked about technical subdivisions and said it applies in some zones, not others. This is one zone where it does apply. So we are proposing a technical subdivision in accordance with two forty-four, fifty-two, or fifty-seven point two F, wherein it states that a technical subdivision may be submitted for financing purposes or marketing, shall be submitted with an approval of a site plan, which we have the site plan application that we have completed testimony on. Such a subdivision application, I'm reading off the ordinance, such application shall be considered a technical subdivision and treated as a minor subdivision, thereby, we have submitted a minor subdivision application, and most importantly, without the necessity of obtaining bulk variances that would technically be required. In other words, each of the townhouse lots, townhouse lots would run down the sidelines of each individual unit, from the behind the sidewalk, i.e. the front yard, to the, to a point behind the deck to encompass a rear yard. We're not required to show evidence of compliance with any zone requirements, because that's done on the site plan level, and we've done that already in previous testimony. Just a couple of performance criteria that I wanna make sure we put on the record that we do comply with. One is that the technical subdivision may not substantially modify or otherwise adversely impact the integrity of the development plan. And this, of course, does not, the subdivision is simply a filed map, does, makes no changes to the parking, access, all of the things that we testified to on the, on the site And lastly, if a technical subdivision includes the division of parking or other common areas, the subdivision shall be conditioned upon appropriate easements for parking, access, drainage. And the subdivision plan that we presented, anything beyond the townhouse lots are, that are developed, that are within the development area, or within the homeowners' association property, that will be owned and maintained by the HOA. That does not apply to the affordable housing lot. The affordable housing lot will be a separate lot to be owned by the affordable housing So the most important thing to talk about with the subdivision is, and we have an exhibit, just a single exhibit, A1, which is up on the screen, we had discussed this in the site plan, is that we are, as part of the subdivision, and this relates to the project density for the residential. Please recall in my testimony at the last hearing, that the area of the property, as it currently exists, which is shown in yellow, that's Lot one point oh one, is one twenty-two point seven acres. So we're adding five point five acres, which is the green, from adjoining Lot two point oh one. So part of the subdivision is to incorporate that green area into Lot, into the property, which then creates an area of one twenty-eight point two acres, which results in the density of three point nine seven that I testified at the last hearing. So that's an extremely critical part of the subdivision, and that was the part that we kinda left off at, at the last hearing. Otherwise, referring to Mr. Peters' letter, I'm just gonna read you a couple of the key points. These are similar to the items that we discussed a few minutes ago. Item C on page four, the question is whether will any other accessory buildings are proposed? In other words, will the townhouse lots be allowed to have accessory structures? And the answer is no.
That would be in the Cado docs that were structured.
That's correct. So no, no sheds or other accessory structures will be permitted on any of the townhouse We are proposing, let me, let me go, it's not a question here, but let me, let me address this. It's not really a question in the letter, but on the question of fences for the townhouse lots. There is no fence, this is, I conflated my testimony earlier today. The answer I gave initially on the other job was actually the one intended for this job. This is what happens when you work fourteen-hour days. There is no fences proposed on these townhouse lots. The only, except for the ten-foot-long privacy fences that the developer will construct, extending from the rear wall of each unit to shield the patios and decks from each other. So those, those will all be-
We definitely see that followers-
No. Nope, sorry. It's six-foot high, ten feet long, between each unit, extending along the sideline towards the rear yard. And the intention of that fence is just a short privacy fence to shield the decks from each other. Otherwise, there's no fences along the remaining side yard, nor the rear yard, nor is any sheds or accessory structures proposed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Borden, did you say that that was along the property line?
Well, it is the new property line, the new sideline between the units.
Could it also be, just for clarification, along the demising wall between the units?
Same thing, yes, absolutely.
So it's gonna start from the building, it's gonna go out ten feet, so that there's a, there's some privacy between each of the units. It will not go any further from the rear face of the units than ten feet.
Correct.
Nor will any other fencing be permitted.
Correct.
Thank you.
I like the way Ernie said it better.
Ian, can I just have a quick question?
Just let her go.
So, yeah, it's, so the six-foot-high solid fence?
Yes.
Okay, ten feet out, are we enclosing it? So we're doing, no, so just the divider?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Just a question, whose fence is that? Who's responsible for it?
We don't know, it's either the HOA or the, what else?
Well, I mean, if it's on the, you know, dividing between the two lots, is there one fence or is it two?
It would be the HOA.
It would have to be.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause it's one fence.
That's why I'm asking.
I know, I know. Great question. It would be the HOA. Otherwise, we agree to comply with the technical comments. I'm checking for anything else. Oh, yes. We agree to comply with the technical comments. I do have two very small items in the letter that I would like to ask that we not be required to provide, and these are very technical things. Those would be on page five, item Q and R. The letter is asking for lot closure calculations and meets and bounds descriptions for each of the four hundred and fifty-nine townhouses. In our opinion, that's unnecessary. Surveyor from my office certifies the final plat before it's filed. Obviously, his license is on the line for any closure, besides the fact that all the townhouse lots are rectangular, so we don't believe that that's required. And as far as meets and bounds descriptions, that's not required. As part of the Map Recordation Act, it's not required to file the plat. Any descriptions would be, if we were dedicating something to the township, I would agree that a meets and bounds description is needed, but none of these lots are being dedicated to the town. Obviously, there are, however, easements on the plat that are, well, they're not being dedicated to the town, so I would say that not there either. We have drainage easements and site easements in the common area. We could do descriptions of those if warranted, but those are not being dedicated to the town, those are being dedicated to the HOA.
Mr. Borden, I'm not sure, Mr. Peters is well-known for his ability to speak for himself, so I'm not speaking for him, but I do have my own question on that. I understand you're asking for relief from the suggestion that you do meets and bounds, but, and I think we had had some conversation about this. I know for myself, because they're townhouses, and you're looking for them to be fee simple lots, I'm still sort of struggling to understand what those boundaries would be.
They're shown on the, on the final map that we had submitted to the board.
And one of the questions that is raised in this report is how they're being perfected subdivision? It will be by filed map, so the filed map, it would be just like if we had a conventional residential subdivision, you wouldn't do a meets and bounds description of every home lot, you would just, they would just be shown on the filed map. That's the reason that we're asking for-
I mean, we can do it, but-
It's just a lot of unnecessary work.
No, I mean, I think it's really, as I said, I don't know what Mr. Peters' concern is, and he'll express it, I'm sure, eloquently, but for me, it really is that thing of, if there's that common wall, how, how you're delineating where the property lies.
And then, as it relates to the easements, since many of them are drainage easements and things of that nature, we probably need to give you the descriptions, because even though the HOA's going to be the grantee of the easement, the town's gonna have the ability to come in and enforce it in the event that those blockages are not, or they're not maintained. So we'll probably have to work with your professionals on the easement documents.
Yeah, if I might, Madam Chair?
Yes.
As it relates to Q and R in our report on page five, lot closure calculations and meets and bounds for the individual townhome lots, if the map, if the technical subdivision is being filed by plat, then those are not necessary. However, because the town at some point, whether through a blanket easement, or through meets, or through specific easements for the drainage structures, and the drainage easements that are located throughout the site, I think that is important to have, not just for the exercise of doing it, or the fees associated with either Mr. Borden preparing them, or Ms. Priani or I reviewing them. I think because the town is going to end up being, having rights to them, I think it's important so that they can be verified out in the field. And while I don't wanna sort of turn this into a survey or final plat conversation, one of the concerns we had and we raised in the report is that these lots, the lines for the lots are just sort of on their, on the plan. At some point, they had to be tied into the outbound of the plan. So once that occurs, there's a starting point. Someone can say, "Here's the property line, you go this way, this way, this way." Just putting them out in the field without connecting them to the property line is insufficient. And quite frankly, the applicant needs them as much as the town does, so that you can recreate those lot lines in the field. Otherwise, what's gonna happen is someone's gonna build a unit, it's gonna be in the wrong spot, it's gonna be over a property line. So we do have a concern that the proposed lots need to be tied to the outbound of the property, so that they can be recreated, just as the easements need to be.
Right, and we, we agree a hundred percent with everything Mr. Peters just said.
Yes.
I actually said it before him, so I'm-
Sounds like gotcha.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we've agreed to address all the other comments, so that concludes our presentation. Otherwise, we've agreed to address all the other comments, so that concludes our presentation. That's all we have on the subdivision.
Oh, okay, I just thought you were going to keep talking.
No.
All right. Any questions from Mr. Alfieri or Mr. Borden? Mr. Peters, Gina, anything else?
Yeah. Go ahead, you first.
Ladies first.
You're the best. Pretty much the same questions like last time, Ian. For the, I see the proposed decks, um, no, I don't see any stair details. Are we offering stair? I'm just asking the, the common questions that I, I get every day during my plan review. I just want to make sure that everything is transparent and I know what to go by.
I understand. I left my pointer. The only, the only place where we, we don't, we do not propose any stairs within the setbacks. The site plans, clearly, we show the stairs outside of the front setback.
But I mean, like off the decks.
And the decks.
So, there's no stairs and no decks within the setbacks, is that what you're saying?
Correct. That only applies in Phase Three, adjacent, on the top of the exhibit, adjacent Demomath Road. There's about four buildings that it applies to, but we set the buildings back far enough so that the decks and stairs are outside of the required front setback to Demomath Road.
Okay, but we, but we are allowing stairs?
Well, we have stairs to the decks, yes.
Okay, all right, because I'm not, I, from the plans I'm looking at, the most recent ones I have anyway, I'm not seeing any stairs proposed. Um, and are you having any, um, protection for finishing garages? Because again, that is something we see often, and we know that affects the parking calculations.
Yeah, I, we, I, we have no issue putting in the HOA documents that the garages can't be finished.
Okay, that they have to remain as part of the parking calculation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alfieri, could you just say that again? I just, I, I want to make sure-
The HOA docs will prohibit the residents from, um, using the garages for anything other than parking or storage. They may, they may put a garbage can in there or something, but that's it.
With the, with the same point, that if the garages were used for anything other than garage spaces, it would invalidate the parking standards for the project, because the, and I'll ask Mr. Alfieri and Mr. Borden, the applicant relies upon a garage parking space to meet the requirements of RSIS for this entire project, correct? Not related to the subdivision, but related to the site plan?
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
But the parking still doesn't meet the RSIS, is it 18 feet, not 20, correct?
For the driveways, that's correct.
But the numbers meet.
And that the driveways, actually, the driveways for the individual townhouses are included in the lot for that townhouse.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask one more question to Mr. Borden. You and I are familiar with the technical subdivision requirements of this ordinance. Generally speaking, technical subdivisions aren't, weren't anticipated for townhome units. They were anticipated for the site plan portion, or the commercial portion of the site. While there's no restriction against it, can you just describe, in 30 seconds, the first two or three sections of the technical subdivision portion of the ordinance, to describe how you believe this is applicable to the townhome units as well?
Yes, uh, the, the first sentence under that 57.2F I noted in my initial testimony, which is the technical subdivision language, there's a four, uh, three different paragraphs associated with that. The first paragraph is, and I believe this is the answer that Mr. Peters is looking for, it states, "It is acknowledged that," excuse me.
Yeah, it's a tough question after a real long day, but I apologize.
No, it's not a tough-
Just to make sure it's clear on the record.
It's, it's not a tough question at all, Ernie, it's just, I'm just, need a bottle of water. Uh, "It is acknowledged that a project to be developed pursuant to the subsection may be of such a size or type to make sectionalization by subdivision or the use of different forms of ownership." That's the key. Uh, a practical necessity. Therefore, a technical subdivision for such a project may be required for marketing or financing purposes. And this speaks to the fact that the ownership of the units could be determined or, or set, or established through a DCA registration and condominium mapping, but, uh, the fee simple lots are proposed for reasons of financing and mortgages. And then it goes on to the sections that I did already testify about, which is that an application for technical subdivision may be submitted with an application for our site plan, which we have done in this case. So, in my opinion, the first paragraph of that ordinance language allows the use of a technical subdivision for the ownership of the townhouse units, as well as the affordable housing building.
Thank you. To the board members, I, there had been some discussion, or, I don't know if there were direct questions, but there was discussion during the site plan portion of the application about why or what or how are we doing the subdivision for the townhome units. We're at the subdivision now. I think that this is the proper location to have that testimony. It can be sort of reintroduced or referred back to when we get to this, even when we get to the site plan. I thought it was important that that testimony was part of this application, because it had been brought up in another application, relating to the same parcel. I apologize for being a stickler for detail, but I wanted to make sure that Ms. Cipriani had a real clean record as it related to the technical subdivision proffers for the, this application. So, I apologize for being long-winded, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Gina? Okay.
That concludes our presentation. We'd request that you open the hearing up to the public, and then I'll make a 10-second summation.
No problem. You all heard that? I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward at this time about the testimony that you've heard this evening, please do so at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public session. 10 seconds.
We'd request that the board grant the subdivision approval variance-free, it's simply lot lines, um, and, uh, we've addressed all the technical comments. Thank you. 10?
12, but it's okay. Listen, everybody else made jokes, I can't. Board, it's up to us for, um, discussion and a possible motion. Mr. Brezzi?
He looked right at me.
I, I, look, I get to blame for everything.
No, it's not a blame.
It's, it's, it's been a tough application. It's been, uh, it's bifurcated, which I never liked looking at. A lot of stuff has been approved already prior to these hearings. There are some things I am not totally happy with. However, they still check all the boxes off and gave the presentation. Our professionals has drilled it, they've agreed with it, and with that, I make a motion to approve.
I second.
I would just like an opportunity to make a comment as well. I don't know if it's okay.
Mr. Brezzi made the motion, Mr. Sutch seconded, I heard that, right? Mr. Sutch seconded.
Yes.
Would you like to make your comment first, Ms. Cipriani, ladies first?
I, I was just, uh, asking if that, uh, motion included the representations that were made regarding the, um, just made during the presentation, um, regarding the fences and-
Wall stipulations that were mentioned, yes.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Martins.
Okay. Mr. Alfieri, you're standing up, you might want to hold on to something. I agree with you. Right?
Wow.
Um, so, just two things.
That's because we both like Smokey Robinson, I think.
There you go, there you go. The paintball, I think you mentioned in the previous-
We withdrew that.
It's out, right? Okay, I just wanted to get it on the record. Um, and then, in, in addition, so in the last, uh, time we got together, I asked, kind of a throwaway line, I asked what Linda's way was. Who was Linda, right? At the time, I didn't know the story, so, um, I do appreciate you giving me the full story. At the time, I wasn't sure I should even ask, now I'm glad I did. Um, so I appreciate that, thank you very much. With that said, I think there are many great things that, that are in here, Linda's way being one of them. You had a-
Mr. Borden, I just want to make sure you, this, this vote right now is only on the subdivision, not on the site plan.
I'll shut up. All right, anyway, um, if, when it comes time, I'm going to vote yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kathleen.
Mr. Brezzi?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Sutch?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, um, now if we can open up the site plan application, I don't remember the number.
Okay, so we're going to move on to applicant number five, Cardinalian Jackson Crossing Number Two, Adventure Crossing Preliminary and Final Site Plan, 839-2, Phase Three and Four, Block 3001, Lot One and 1.01. Mr. Alfieri?
Yes, thank you again, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. The, the site plan application was subject of several pretty exhaustive hearings, some of which I did, some Ms. Jennings and Mr. Pfeffer did. We believe we've addressed all of the technical comments contained within the various reports. We believe that, uh, that there are really no issues that were left unsaid, there are no variances that were requested, there's some design waiver relief, but from, from a pure zoning point of view, it's variance-free. And therefore, we request that the board, uh, grant the approval, subject to all the conditions that were contained in the various hearings that took place, which probably will take too long to run through tonight, but the transcripts I've given to Ms. Cipriani, so she now has the record where she can create a comprehensive resolution if the board were to grant the approval. That's all.
Okay. I'm going to, well, any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Martins, did you want to make a comment now, or?
Is there a way I can just say ditto to what I was saying before?
Absolutely, that's fine.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine. All right, um, being that there's no more comments or questions from the board, I'm going to go ahead and open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward at this time, please do so. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the public session. Board, it's up for us to, it is up to us for discussion. Mr. Brezzi, are you looking at me again?
Through the chair? I'm just paying attention to the leader.
Yes.
Through the chair? Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, I just, two, two comments. I'm personally not comfortable with the fact that the driveways, um, are not compliant with RSIS. I think that it's not fair to potential homeowners to have, you know, constant nicking on the vehicles, being that they're going to be so close. I think that if, if they would minimize, um, the building just a little bit, and they would get some more space, then they would be able to comply. I don't think it's such a big ask. Additionally, I've asked from the beginning for a copy of the GDP, so we could clarify exactly the density, and to date, we still have not received it.
I could respond to the second point. The density is not an issue on this app, it will be on Phase One application, but this application with that subdivision, it's now fully compliant with the, it's less than four units per acre. So, there's, that's really shouldn't be an issue. As, as it relates to RSIS, I would have to turn that over to Ian.
Before you answer, Ian, I, I know we sat here, and they were originally 16-foot, and then you guys moved it to 18-foot, which I, I appreciate. The part I don't appreciate is, every time you meet RSIS, you're throwing in our face that we met the RSIS and we're heroes and you can't do nothing. Why can't we just get that to 20-foot to the RSIS? And then it takes away that whole thing, a little better for everybody. I don't know, what you have to do with the size of the house, is losing the apartment or whatever.
If that is the opinion of the board, then we'll agree to do 20-foot driveways.
You'll do the 20-foot driveway?
I mean, that was the traffic testimony from Mr. Reyes, supported by the board traffic engineer, was that the 18 was sufficient, but if the board members have strong opinions on that, we'll, we'll create the 20-foot driveway.
For myself, I can't speak for the other board members. One, it gets us to the RSIS standard, which we try to meet without any differences. And two, I think, once you don't have the full 20-foot, somebody parks a little crooked, another car in the street somehow.
I understand.
So, that's why I like to go with the 20-20, it's up to my board, fellow board members.
I understand, so we'll, we'll provide the 20-foot driveway for each, uh, each townhouse unit.
Thank you.
I'm good with that also.
Thank you. I apologize. Since board members are making comments, I want to make sure Ms. Cipriani has details specific for the resolution. Mr. Borden, can the site sustain 20-foot-wide driveways for every unit?
Yes.
So, we're not going to get, when we're done with the application, well, we said we could do 20, but we really can't because of this, that, or the next thing.
No. Each unit is 22 feet wide, so they-
Perfect, thank you.
-accommodate the 20-foot driveway.
Thank you.
I apologize, it's, I, I need to make the record clear, so that there aren't any, any post-approval questions, concerns, any zoning department issues, it's what, I apologize for being a stickler, but I think it's important.
Just to, to button up the, uh, the density issue and the GDP, um, my office prepared a memo which is circulated amongst our team at some point, before you hear the Phase One application, your attorney and the board will have that memo as to why we think we comply with density, but that's, we, we kicked that debate down the road to the next application.
The whole reason for the green on Exhibit A1 was to make this site comply with the four-unit breaker on this property.
So, again, if, Madam Chair, if I, if I could ask a question of the applicant, um, what is the gross density for the Phase Three and Four project?
3.97.
Which is less than four.
Correct.
Based upon the subdivision that was just approved.
Correct.
Notwithstanding that Phase Three and Four now provide less than four units an acre, we've not decided what the calculations for Phase, revised Phase One, I don't know, A, B, whatever it is.
Yes.
We haven't figured that out yet.
Correct.
And that's part of a different application, the application is before us now, which now has a density of less than four units an acre.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Any other questions or comments?
I, I think I just want to put one comment on the record if I can. Um, so we are here to make a decision based on our head, not our heart, so my comment before about Linda's way and all the other stuff, I'm very confident that I can make a decision without being influenced that way.
I do believe we have a motion on the, um, no?
No.
Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry.
No, that was before.
See? Now I'm confused. I told you it's time to go home. All right, so, we've heard the discussion, um, anything else? Mr. Brezzi?
Yes, I would like to make a motion. Very long application. And, 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 Mr. Martin, there is one part that is, when somebody, being a personal part to a complex this size, to be Linda Drive, and the sign for the Vince Akara family being a decent sign, uh, when, oh, that family had it for almost 100 years, and the only way Tony ever relaxed when he was aggravated, he'd go out and ride his tractor. So, I think that means a lot. But beside all that, from a professional standpoint, you check so many boxes, you make concessions, like with the driveways, and you work along with this board, in, in a lot of patience, for a lot of weeks, a lot of months, a lot of hearings. And with that, and all the stipulations, when you get them all done, included, I make a motion to approve.
If need be, I can second it.
Well, either someone has to second it or-
I second the motion.
So, we have a motion and a, um, we have a motion and a second on the table. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Mr. Brezzi?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Sutch?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. And look, it's only 10:01. None of us saw that.
Do we need a motion to close?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All the favor.
Aye.
Gina?